Eight, seven o'clock, so we're gonna start the meeting. Monday, April fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five, Williamson Select Board Meeting. First thing we do is say pledge allegiance to flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Okay, exactly, set the agenda. Is there anything to be added to the agenda? What do you have with it?
No, so then there is no executive session.
Okay, so we need a motion to prove the agenda is written?
Well, we're sitting, there is no.
Yeah, I did cross off litigation at the bottom, but there is no executive session, that was from the fire one.
I'll make a motion.
Title two has written.
Fairness has written.
Second.
Motion made second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Like saying, if you open public comments, if anyone hasn't been here before, there's a laminated sheet up back, tells how the meetings are run. Anybody who's interested in looking at that? Is there any select board announcements?
None for me.
No? Any public announcements? Private?
The Payne Mountain School District three road will be held Thursday at the Williamson Middle High School Library from ten AM to seven PM. Should we vote for the budget? Thursday.
Okay, commissions, committees, trustees, emergency service, reports, other boards?
Yes, sir, planning permission. Just very quickly, I'd like to thank the select board, planning commission, Jackie and Barb for help with the municipal planning grant and proving that you go forward. I'd also like to say a special thanks to the Annesworth Public Library, Williamson Food Shelf and Williamson Historical Society for letters of support, along with the grant application, which means a lot, too. So, the grant awards will be announced on April thirtieth. Again, I feel that we have a good, you know, we have a strong application that's in here, so fingers crossed. But I wanted to thank everybody for their help and support along the way. It does take a lot to put in for all that, so appreciate it.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything?
WYSI, so Christian came down, we got a crew over there, got the fencing down, got all the major excavation done, pushed things back, we got the last pole set. So I just gotta get back with Christian to do the trenching and the Benoit can come in and run all the electrical and the lights have been ordered, so they should be here. I gotta check in with them again, but beginning of May, I think when the lights will actually be here. So hopefully by the end of May, the lights out.
You play baseball on the lights?
Well, through the soccer field.
Through the soccer field, yeah?
Maybe some, sometime down the road through the baseball field, but yeah.
You could play baseball on the soccer field.
Eh, you could, yeah.
Get the Williamson Mountaineers in.
Yeah.
Okay, approval of warrants? I would accuse myself, sorry it's been approved, but one of them's mine, you get three letters here anyway.
Right.
Approval of S B two nine oh nine eight, two one three eight, two two one three nine, two two one four oh, and two two one four one. Got a motion on that?
Make the motion to approve, has written.
Second.
Motion made second, any discussion? Good, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Say payroll warrants, three twenty-three, twenty-five, at four six twenty-five. Got a motion on that?
Make the motion to approve.
There's so good.
I have to abstain.
Yeah, I have to abstain as well.
Tyler's on there.
I could do four six, cuz I'm not on that.
Oh, we're about, the fire department is here.
Yeah, but I am on three twenty-three.
You buggers.
Sorry about the community.
Well, that's not gonna work very well.
Can we call Scott and phone? Can we table that?
We can table, we can table those.
Oh, we can, we could do four six.
So you're on the four six?
I am, I am not on the four six.
You're on, you're not on the four six, which one are you on? We might be able to work this. Are you on the March or the four six?
The March.
Three twenty-three?
Oh, so, so the three of you can approve the March one and the three of you can approve the four six?
Yes, so we just have to, I have to abstain from the three twenty-three. He has to abstain from it.
And you have to abstain, abstain, but everybody else can approve yours.
Yes. Did everybody get that? I actually got that.
Well, I thought you were on one of the one.
No, we're not.
This is table, this is table, they're fine, they're fine. You're on the other one.
So we just have to do each payroll separately.
They can do March.
Yep.
Okay, so.
I can do.
And the future is, can we keep this to, that they're on separate pages? So we can approve these?
Make a room separate.
Well, luckily, we have five people here, so the three of you can approve them all, you know?
Okay. I'm not on any of them, I'll make your, I believe I already made the motion to approve, okay?
So is this for both, or are you?
This is.
We're gonna do it separately.
Just do.
We'll do one at a time. Okay.
Okay, so the March one?
Yes.
Okay.
Let me bring that back, make sure I give my numbers right.
So you can.
March, March, you don't abstain.
Right.
I'm, no, I'm on the March one.
As am I.
I thought you were on the April one.
Who's that?
No, I'm on, I'm on March.
Oh, okay, so, all right, so we're gonna have to table that one.
Okay.
Okay, let's do the four six.
Sorry.
Okay.
That happened before in fourteen years, so.
We're following the law.
Can we call, call, get his opinion on this?
Motion to move four six twenty-five?
Oh.
Make a motion to approve four six twenty-five?
Uh, yes, I do.
I'll second it.
Motion made second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, you, sorry, you guys didn't get it yet.
Oh, they already did.
It goes into my checking account.
Okay, then we got a next item is approved as select board meeting minutes of three ten thirty-five. All I've got is one little paper. Second sentence up from the bottom.
First page?
Yep. Get Tyler made motion.
Motion.
Motion, okay.
Motion, yes.
Okay, got it.
That's all I've got on.
Okay. Made a motion. I, I, I'll make the motion to approve the previous minutes with the exception of the spilling error.
Second.
Spilling, yeah, okay. Who is, you second it?
I second it.
Yeah, I second it, yeah.
Okay, y'all, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, excited, this is management report, Jackie?
Okay, delinquent taxes as of today are one hundred sixty-four thousand, five thirty-four oh nine. Water is at thirteen thousand, one sixty, seventy-nine. Sewer is at nineteen thousand, one hundred fifty dollars and ninety-five cents. Tax sales are still moving forward, we still have thirteen on the list. The tax sales will probably be in June at this point. Let's see, FEMA, we closed out the December eighteen, twenty twenty-three FEMA. July twenty, twenty-three FEMA has been closed out once they pulled back the Graniteville Road. And the July twenty twenty-four, we're only pen, the only thing that's pending is the CATV and the Bailey Road application. They took the one Graniteville Road one and split it because a portion of it was on Bailey Road, so they split it, so FEMA is paying us for that portion. And then the other portion is going into the federal highway grant, which all of that paperwork's been submitted. We're waiting for the approval in DC and then it won't be too long after that that we'll receive the money on that. And that's actually ninety percent versus seventy-five percent from FEMA. So we'll be getting back a little bit more on, on that project for all of the Graniteville Road. Paving grants are going to be submitted tomorrow to the state, the quote from Pike and I'm merging the upper part of Graniteville Road, Robar and Coxell Street into that paving grant. They're roughly about, one was a hundred and twenty-three and the other one, other two were around a hundred and ten thousand. So they'll be merged into one project because basically it's one road that all goes together. So that'll be submitted tomorrow. The Meadow Street update, the eviction notices, they ignored. It's now back in the hands of Orange County Sheriff's Department and Ross Derry to take the next step to get them approval for the property for the FEMA buyout. Kathy Bruno has agreed to be our interim assessor starting April seventeenth. Kathy's a formal listener for the town of Williamson. She also owns her own appraisal company and her wealth of knowledge in the appraisal industry and with the town of Williamson will be an easy transition into this position. She's also the one that is going to be doing the reappraisal starting September first anyway, so she's gonna start April seventeenth. She's already actually started working with May on the transition and Gordy and Hill Peabody are going to assist her with the reappraisal with some of the legwork on that. The transfer station was taken over April first by the new owner, Evan Johnson. His first weekend went very well down there. And when he's been down there, you'll notice that there's been a lot of cleanup and he's continuing to clean up and get things removed from there. He's got a different way of setting it up, so it's a quicker run, run through. There's no sorting of recycling anymore. So it's gonna be a faster transition for people going down there. I completed the second year ARPA annual report on the eleventh to the federal government. We currently have a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars that's been appropriated but has not been spent. Thirty thousand of it is for the clock tower and the other hundred and fourteen is, was allocated to the town for Arch. So that's where we stand with that. The Hoyt Seaver Ball Field property transaction to Chris DeGru and his wife to purchase the parking lot. We're asking for an extension to April twenty-fifth, which is a week from Friday. He's brought me in a three thousand dollar deposit to hold it, but it's just getting his wife in there to get the paperwork signed. She can't do it until the twenty-fifth, so if you can extend that, the deadline is tomorrow.
Need a motion or just an agreement?
Yeah, like it's just, just a verbal, but it's okay.
I mean, you said it, the regulations, yeah.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're, they put, I'm just gonna say they put a deposit down, same with their.
The process continues in the fore.
Oh, I've done, I've done all the, I've got the deed and the property transfer tax form sitting on my desk. It's just getting them in there with the, the final six thousand dollars and signing it and giving it to Barb to get recorded, so it's gonna happen.
Okay.
And then I wanted to update you on the Heidi's Havens pig case. The arraignment was last Wednesday. She pled not guilty. The state's attorney has filed a motion for her to forfeit the pigs. And that's been submitted to the, to the judge, so we just have to wait on that. But the next status hearing on, on that, on the pig case is July thirtieth.
Should we still take care of the pigs or should we get it back?
We, the, the pigs are in Charlotte at a rescue. It's no longer undisclosed because it's public record through the courts. They are doing a big fundraiser in support of the pigs, Merrimack Farm Sanctuary. So we probably won't have to pay anything at all for the boarding of the pigs. They've got, you know, a huge following up there and the pigs are doing very well. They look really good. They send me weekly updated pictures of how they're doing. They're no longer drinking each other's urine because that's what they were doing prior to this because they didn't have enough water. They're doing very, very well, but yeah, Era is, is doing a big fundraiser to help take care of them. They're getting twenty-five pounds of grain a day and about twenty gallons of water a day they're going through. So they're doing very well. So that's where we stand with that. And then my last thing is the Clark Road fifty-foot foot turnaround right away that Lucky had agreed to at the last hearing that we had on Clark Road. He still has not signed it. I sent him an email almost two weeks ago, giving him two options. Either if he wasn't happy with the way that it was, the deed was written, which has been revised twice because his attorney didn't like the wording in it. That if he does, if he wants to spend the money to survey that fifty-foot square turnaround, which is ridiculous because one end of it is Clark Road and the other is the, the town, the border between Lucky's property and Second Springs. So there's just two other corners there, which we agreed to when Dave and I met with him, that he can either spend the money, he had until today to respond to me, he has not responded to me, to pay to have the survey done to his liking at his expense. Or if I did not hear from him by today, then I was coming back to the board to request a final site visit and a hearing on reclassifying the rest of that road to a class four from Route sixty-four up to Second Springs property line.
Yeah, we've missed that long enough, I think it's time to, and so, so you'd like us to, the motion to?
Have, have a hearing on May tenth would be the next select board meeting, I believe that for the month day.
And this, just so, cuz I was not on select board during this. And I just looked at my Google Maps, I was thinking my phone, sorry, my streets are not perfect. This is the gentleman that tried to get it extended farther up cuz it was originally only to where the dry hydrant was for the fire department, correct? That was what the town was going to be maintaining.
So originally, it was a class three road all the way up to Second Springs.
Yeah.
And then it was revised, so it ended at the corner of the barn.
Okay.
Of Second Springs barn on the left-hand side going up. And then it was revised again at a second hearing, bringing it back down to the property line. So, which comes down around that little sharp corner there where the stone wall is. And that's where it was left and that's when Lucky agreed to the fifty-foot turnaround east to the town for us to turn around or plow in snow. That was last August, that was the, the second one.
Is that, is that the, is that the, the storage area?
Yes, yeah.
Originally.
I drive by it all the time.
Originally, it was up here at the top of the barn and then it came down here. The property line is right there where that ditch is. So that's where it currently is right now. So now, we have the hearing in May, site visit and the hearing in May, it would reclassify it from sixty-four all the way up to the ditch just above this driveway right there.
But the turnaround is supposed to be?
The turnaround is right where that power pole is. You see the power pole right there? So it would go from there back to the tap, the Second Springs line and it's basically is a square.
When we went up the last time and talked with him, we had discussed the turnaround being up at the, you know, top where that telephone pole was, right at the top of his driveway. He was worried about the snow building up front of his doors going into his storage unit. So we said, well, the other thing we could do is drive the road and plow it off to the right cuz all the snow comes off and plow on the right side anyways. And that would be all down into lower end of his driveway. And while I think I put a plus storage unit in there.
Which he isn't.
Which he is.
Which he has done. So even doing it where we said we would do it to begin with is not optimal. We could make it work if he needed us that fifty-foot turnaround. He, I don't know what his deal is, he was all about it to begin with and now he won't even return calls.
Well, just the storage and Second Springs there.
Which we only do properties on here, correct?
I think we've given enough opportunity to come up with something just like we did everyone else. And I think it's time just to throw the whole thing up and have it all go with.
That's why it's one day.
I believe it's May tenth is the second Monday and so I would, I would send out letters tomorrow.
Don't they have to have thirty days?
What's your thoughts, Clay, you've been involved in all these?
Yes, I have, I've, uh.
It'd be May twelve.
I say we'd be done with it.
We're on my count.
Reclassify the whole thing as a class four, just stop plowing it. It's been a nightmare since we've had to deal with it.
Yep.
And Lucky's had more than enough time. I've had the multiple site visits with Dave and you guys.
Oh, yeah. A yearly event.
Yeah, so, and that's my suggestion, huh?
So you want to make a motion?
I make the motion to reclassify that road as class four.
Well, we're gonna have to have a site visit and a hearing on.
Start the process.
Start the process.
There a second?
Second.
Motion made second, any further discussion?
I mean, I'm sure we'll discuss this. This is the first time I've ever dealt with anything like this, but obviously the dry hydrant is there and yes, I am a member of the fire department, but that is more for the community's basis, so as long as that's clear.
That's down by the, that's by the Route sixty-four?
Yeah, it's very close to the roof. I just wanna make sure if it's a blizzard storm and that has to be utilized, you know, there's no hydrants up on Route sixty-four.
Right.
The channel date that, yeah, just like.
That's, that's all, that's just for the general population of this community.
Or baloney, baloney road, the one up there, by the horse pasture, we plowed that all the time.
That's the only thing I can see in the future, I mean, I hope to work with people, but obviously it doesn't seem like this gentleman is.
Well, it wasn't, it wasn't really lucky, we've dealt with the Second Springs for.
But the other problem, that dry hydrant don't work anyway.
Roger was on the fourth, yeah, so.
Always has when I'm trained with.
Oh, we, so it didn't work.
Well, it might not be working lately, I don't know.
Right.
So I'll schedule that.
So I said, you make a motion.
We'll do that at six, six.
All in favor?
For the select board meeting.
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, aye.
One second, just discussion, still, Dave mentioned that you need thirty days notice before.
We've been through this enough.
Okay.
I'll get the, I'll get the letters, certified letters out tomorrow.
I just don't want.
He, he was, he was warned.
Is that, is that legal?
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay. I just wanted him to come back to write us if we.
I agree with that.
Is that just the two properties?
It's just the two properties, yeah.
Okay.
Hey, Martin, be here for six PM, my first is Saturday.
Yeah, Second Springs is already on the last floor, so really it's just, it's just Lucky that's gonna be notified.
Okay.
But I will send them a letter just for.
I said, I'll take it.
So that'll be six o'clock on the, twelve.
Six o'clock.
Site visit?
Site visit and then.
So you'll send us a reminder?
Yep, it'll go out in the, the package.
Twelfth of May?
Yeah. And that's all it, oh, and then I have.
Next meeting is?
Yes.
Oh, it's on the same.
It's on the same night, I got.
Yeah, she, she thought fourth was, or the tenth.
I thought it was the tenth, yeah.
That, that's Saturday.
Anyone in the audience have questions for Jackie?
I just have one more thing.
Oh, I thought you were done.
No.
I keep an eye on my question.
You have a question?
No.
Oh.
Although I was ready, I should have thrown out first.
I'm not gonna argue with you on that one. We're in agreement there. I just have one more thing, I've got the price for the apron down at the pumpkin pantry. And it's gonna be fifteen thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. And that's for great area for proper runoff, paved area three inches thick using type two asphalt for the base and type four asphalt for the top with an overlay nine, nine by eighty-four foot area in roadway between Entre the Dollar General using type four asphalt.
Would you say it was three inches thick?
Three inches thick using two.
I would highly recommend and go minimum of four.
Yeah, he was supposed to go down to half, one and a half. All right, I'll, I'll fix that.
Right there, right where people turn in all the time.
Trucks coming in to pump the pantry.
And we have to remember that that.
The water valves are in there.
Yeah, the, there in the corner, so we have to be careful of those.
This river keep getting those potholes right there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just the, the way it's some, there's no place for the water to go and it just sits there. It needs to be dug out, re-levelled and, and paved with the ground.
Yeah.
And then the other piece on there is the length of the hedges in front of Dollar General where those big potholes are. It's just a one pass down that right lane, doing them, filling the potholes and then one ship right down that right lane is adding to that. But it was supposed to be four inches.
So we'll get that amended, but do I have approval to do it?
Shouldn't add much to it, I mean.
No.
And he's gonna do the bottom of Garden Street at the same time that the water line break at the bottom of Garden Street? He's gonna fix that.
That was only twelve hundred.
I'll, I'll make a motion to amend that with the four inch.
Okay.
Two areas that we fixed the water line on, Brockway Hill and Circle Street, they need paving back.
Okay, we'll have, I'll have Jeremy.
Yeah, Roger's gonna come over, he's just got back yesterday, he's gonna come over and talk to me about those.
And what's the deal on the one in front of where the Garden Street area?
That was the one, that's gonna get done with this, that was twelve, that was just under twelve hundred dollars.
I was thinking about.
Yeah, that one's gonna be done at the same time as the Saturday.
So you might as well do those other two.
Right, yeah, we get the price for them.
I don't know of any others, anybody else dig up anything around it?
There's nothing else that's been cut out that needs to be repaired right now. I mean, I got poles and stuff to repair, but I'm gonna assume the asphalt plate, hole for the dog ramps, I'll fix them. Patch them in.
Thank you for filling those holes in the other day.
Aye.
I'm sure, I'm not the only one, appreciate it.
I sat down yesterday, we have spent twenty-six hundred and fifty dollars in the last four months on gold patch for them holes.
You're doing the right thing, cutting it out.
So, how you doing there, my pal? Yeah. That'll eat your car.
Yeah, now I'm done.
Okay.
Uh, just, I'm gonna throw out one thing for Steve of Salty Field. I put up the rink this winter, I will take it down at some point. It's on my to-do list, unfortunately, the water, I think someone damaged the liner, the water bled out. And then just one other thing for potentially Salty Field.
Seaver.
Seaver, sorry.
Seaver.
Brink, Seaver, can we get bases out there? Is that something we're gonna do?
Yeah, I've got, I've just gotta order them.
Okay.
They have the flushed ones that they can mow over on, it's on, I'm getting.
And I'll be honest, my family occasionally goes over there and the kids play baseball, but I thought that was part of the whole deal with.
Yeah, it was, I did buy it last year because of all the, it was so wet that they didn't want to be over there, so.
Yes, but.
Fingers crossed.
And fingers crossed I will get that plywood down by the end of the week, but. And hopefully next year the rink will actually freeze and kids can actually skate on, that's the goal.
Okay?
I'll say it.
Um, don't we get it, somebody get a second?
Yeah, I had made a motion.
Aye.
As they amended with the four inch.
Yep, I got that.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, see you.
All right. Hello, everyone, I'm Trevor, I represent Williamson on the governing board of now NEKCB Fiber. And by, here is, there is, Vermont has been allocated two hundred and twenty-eight million dollars worth of feed funding and NEKCB is putting in their grant application for that funding. It's due April sixteen, so right around the corner. And we're, basically NEKCB is looking for support from all the member town select boards that's seventy-one communities in NEKCB. Saying why fiber is important to communities, why I P D R supports communities, Williamson, the number of addresses on the letter would be four hundred and fifteen, addresses forty-eight miles of fiber that be in this community. They support local jobs, right, their job training program for, to, to support alignment. So really just the letter would be, the select board would be showing their support for NEKCB as they're doing their grant application and why. And why this is, from it's important to Williamstown. Fiber, this is fiber, yep.
How much has been installed in Williamstown so far?
So unfortunately, Williamstown is at the other end, so they started building in Callis and Middlesex. And they're working their way around. There's kind of this like donut shaped kind of backbone. Um, I think, you know, part of the thing is with bead, with the strong bead application, it certainly moves up the timeline. Um, you know, I, I can't predict when it will make it to Williamstown, but certainly, you know, the more bead funding N E K C B gets, the faster they can do construction, the faster they can bring fiber, fiber down here.
So I, I know, hi Ted.
Hi.
Uh, I know like, I, I, we live up on Baptist here and the only thing you can consolidate it, which is garbage.
Yeah.
Um, so I recently just got Starlink, cause that's the only option. So I've been on the list for C D Fiber for a while. Um, I'm sure they're probably at least a couple of years out at the rate they're at now. Um, but I, I know like, especially in today's day and age, getting some decent internet makes a huge difference. Um, and most common people's life, people, people work from home, so be, be able to have some decent internet. Um, and it's almost the same price of what consolidated is, is charging now for not good internet. Uh, so I know me personally, like I got Starlink, but if C D Fiber came through, I would, I would swap over to a dedicated, you know, fiber line that's coming through. So I, I, I know I, I support this. Um.
Yes, and I'm glad I'm, I'm Starlink, cause part of the, the challenge with bead is, for a while bead was imagined to be pretty much like fiber exclusively as the technology they would implement. Um, but there is, as the political, national political kind of circles, there, there may be more Starlink. And for some folks, Starlink works. For some people, if you don't have a view of the southern sky, Starlink's not gonna work for you. Also, Starlink ain't cheap per month and it has some startup costs, though. Starlink is certainly an option. If you can't get high speed, it's certainly better than consolidated, you know, ten download speed kind of, but you know, I, I think there's certainly challenges with Starlink. So yeah, fiber is faster, it's cheaper, it's more local. Um, so yeah, it's definitely an opportunity.
Yeah, I guess my question to you, uh, reason for my question is this. Started out when I first got on the board back in two thousand eight with E C Fiber. They're gonna have the whole state covered in five years and it's been a long time since then. And if they're still not, see their trucks running around in other towns that were part of that. And then they had this other one, such a want, you know, born here for I don't know how long, five or six years, but. I've never seen nothing get done in Williamstown, so.
Yeah.
We, we keep proving it, keep supporting it, but nothing ever happens, so.
Yeah.
Kind of losing faith in the situation, I guess.
I, if, I have a little bit of faith, cause I've been attending Williamstown for almost three years, so I'm, I'm there with you. Um, and it's certainly not as fast as I think anyone imagined when we started this thing. Uh, but it may have been faster if the town had gone with E C Fiber all the way back in the day. But it's tough to, to get a whole network built and designed and get them make ready for the poles and dealing with, you know, in our community, some of it's G M P, some of it's W A C. And getting the ability to actually have the space and poles and get the design done. Yeah, it's not, it's not an easy. I understand the frustration absolutely, that, you know, I, I would love to learn C D Fiber and have it done. Um, but, you know, I think the letter's support, it, it basically says that, you know, we, we support the, the town and N E K C B in, in applying for funding. Um, you know, there's nothing that the town has to add, like there's no tax revenue sources associated with it. So I, as far as I'm concerned, there's nothing by signing up a line. It just says, you know, internet is important and I don't see any real risk to it. Doesn't commit the town anyway, but it just says we support internet and N E K C B, N E K C B's application.
Well, I mean, I have the problem support. I just, you know, I see something happen.
Oh, I absolutely agree with you, yeah.
Yeah, isn't there fiber in Southbury?
There is some fiber in Southbury, so yes, there is uh, video that's kind of working their way and then coming in this direction. But it's, I think they're facing the same thing. They, they, they're probably looking at some bead funding. Um, I don't know what their plans are, but I've been promised by video that, you know, it's right around the corner. Still waiting on that, so.
Yeah. I, I would question kind of related to you. How much timeframe, what, what does this um, create for you for workload? I mean, just writing this up, I mean, hon- honestly.
Nothing, getting you to sign the letter.
Five years and I haven't seen anything done.
It's, it's getting you to sign the letter, that's.
Okay.
I think it's just saying the town supports trying to get high-speed internet into the town.
That would be, that'd be nice.
I, I'll take the workload from y'all. I, I.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm good, I'm good.
Yeah.
I think everybody's just, we've gone through this, I don't know, four or five times of different people. Nothing's happened yet, so.
Well, when you get it, you're gonna love it.
Exactly.
Cause I have E C Fiber.
Really?
In first year.
And you'll live forever.
I had it in Tunbridge. I had E C Fiber in Tunbridge before I went first year.
Unreal, weird powers, man.
Just believe it, we see it, right? Okay, so everybody on board with signing this letter?
Yes. Do we need an approval? Let's go ahead with the letter.
Form a move over or just verbal?
Just sign it after.
We make a motion and we'll have it official.
Okay. Alright, make, make with the motion to go forward with this letter for approval to help the E C Fiber or whatever your name is.
Yes, N E K, yes, N E K C B.
Okay.
Yeah.
It was E C Fiber.
Yep. Yep, I want that too.
Two seconds?
Second.
Twenty seconds.
Most big seconded. Any further discussion? Favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yes, you're all set.
I have two.
Yep, okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Alright. Go C D Fiber now.
Okay, next side up is the five-year road plan and drainage projects. Um, you wanna leave that on Dave or?
Nope. You go ahead, Larry. I did all this work so far. Probably Jackie should read the five-year road plan first.
Five-year road plan, I can do that.
Do I have to do that?
So for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, we have culvert replacement on Baptist Street. Two culverts to replace on Stone Road. Uh, on Flint Road from Doug Ford Sugar House to Ron House Residence. You've got drainage above Ford Sugar House and Chris Cuffey's Residence and just before Ron House Residence. You have a culvert by Ron House needs to be replaced. Ditching and top dress from Sugar House to Ron House. Ditching above Jeff Bailey's Residence to Cold Springs and top dress and replace culvert above Jeff Bailey's. On Hebert Road, we have drainage from Isabel Residence to the town line. On Pleasant Street, we've got drainage from Charlie Carrier's mom's house to Ian Shangron's Residence. On Snow Bridge Road, we've got drainage from the top of the pavement off Falls Bridge to the top of the hill. On South Hill Road, we've got Stores Hill, raise the guardrails, dig down eighteen inches in top dress. Remove burn the entire road and clean ditches. McCarthy Road, culvert replacement out by the water tank, ledge removal and ditching by York Residence. Cogswell Street, we've got the manhole repair, culvert replacement, ditching and reclaim and repave. Robar Road reclaim and repave. Chelsea Road, Grandview Intersection, replace culvert and shoulder work. Weir Road, install culvert before Birch Lane and replace culvert above Crab Apple. Then we move to twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven, Granite Hill Road, finish paving to Cogswell, Robar Road intersections. Perry Road reclaim and repave. Palace Road ditching and top dress. Glen, burn removal, ditching and top dress. Gilbert Road drainage, culvert replacement below Paquins Farm and top dress. Chelsea Road drainage by Butler Residence to Hall, Hallier's Residence and ditching and top dress. And then twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-eight, Root Pond Road, burn removal, ditching, drainage work just past Pleasant Street intersection to Boys Road. And by Duncan Combs' house, top dress to town line. Getz Road culvert replacement before school bus turnaround and Cubby Road ditching and top dress.
So what we're talking about with road drainage work is every year we have certain roads that when a frost comes up out of the ground, it lifts the road up. You get these great, big huge bumps in the road. It happens in the same spots every year and it's because the water runs down the middle of her, in the road base and it hits either a clay surface or uh, something that stops it and then the frost just pushes it up and comes up out of the ground. So there's certain places that we thought the best thing to do would be to run some center drain. Uh, some perforated drain pipe, fabric, stone down the center of the road to pick up that water. And then daylight it into the ditch down at the bottom of the, this is all for hills and stuff where, where it does this. The main thoughts that we're having issues are uh, Flint Road, Hebert Road and Pleasant Street are the, the big ones. Um, you can't get on those roads to knock them humps off until the frost is all out of the ground. And it's really miserable to drive on. Um, this has been done in quite a few areas in town in the past that were absolute qualifiers. They're mud season and now they're good hard roads. You see hardly any bumps on to speak of it all. Uh. It's not something that's gonna cure all the mud, but it will definitely help the roads. So my thoughts are if we could possibly hit some of these worst sections this year, uh, we're gonna save on material, cause as soon as those humps break open, we're having to truck in load after load after load of stone. Uh, to get a surface available to drive on. Um, and we're doing that every year and mud season. And then we have to put the trucks on a soft road loaded and we end up causing more issues getting to the spots where the mud hole is. Um, so we're thinking the five-year plan that was in effect um, up until the flood of twenty twenty-three, where it was left off, Baptist Street was supposed to be the next road that was rehabbed. Um, we've done a fair amount of work on Baptist Street over the last three years because of the flooding. It, it needs some ditch work in like that, but it's by far not the worst road in town right now. So we were thinking maybe we could bump Baptist Street down a year and do some of this drainage work this year. Um, so that's kind of what we're asking the select board to approve for us to do. Um, our road rehab budget is not huge. We're not gonna get all of this done this year by far. Um, but what we could get done is gonna save us in the long run.
We did areas uh, quite a few years ago from the sharp corner on Hebert Road, turns down the hill. Did from down that road a little ways, from, from there down to Bedore's, dip there. And, well, then that process, we're digging up granite chips and grout that they've been dumped in there over the years in the mud holes in the spring. And we put that in, uh, back in two thousand eight. And that road has not humped up in that area since then. And that thing was, you could lose a Volkswagen and it swells and be so high it'd go down. And then another than one we did more recently, that's up on the bottom of Martin Road. That was always a big quiet wire for the first three, four hundred feet. Now, it's just a little rough, but need to be graded, but other, there's no swells or nothing in it. So this, if you do this, do it right, the key is to get the pipe, pipe down at least five feet in the ground, crush stone around it. And not stop if you come to ledge or try to raise the pipe up over ledge. It's just a feat of purpose. You gotta go underneath the culverts in there. You gotta break through the ledge if you, if you run across a ridge of it. Keep that water flowing to a low point. If you do it, do it right, it'll work good. It's gonna save, save the town in the long run. Cause it, like Dave just said, you're hauling, trying to haul material and fix these things are off ways out into the roads. So you're just ruining the rest of the road trying to get to it and then get the deal with school buses not being able to get through in the spring and stuff like this. Or before you put a lot of money on top dressing roads, you need to fix these bad spots first, get drainage in. Then you can go forward and work on the road surface afterwards. That's, that's my opinion. Yeah, I've seen it. We've done it and it works and uh, I think it's best interest of the town to, to start on that first. Then before you start worrying about surface and roads, make sure you get drainage in. Not all, not everywhere, but the, the worst spots, but it's what we, Jackie and Dave and I rode around and while the swells are still in place, so we know where they are and they're marked out. And come up with an area where to ditch them off with and stuff, so it should work. So I guess what we need now is to have the board amend the five-year road plan to incorporate this. Back off on Baptist Street or whatever the next one on the list was for now.
When you say Baptist Street, are you talking about just the culvert or rehabbing the whole?
The culvert has to be replaced.
Okay.
Uh, that's the other thing. I mean, with the number of culverts that we have that we found in the last two years with the flooding. Uh, we've replaced some culverts that flooded out, but we've found culverts that weren't even on our, in culvert in the nori that are causing issues. And uh, most of the culverts that she listed have actually failed and they're causing damage to the road. They gotta be replaced.
Yeah.
Baptist Street Culvert is one that will have to be replaced. Uh, and the guardrails on Baptist Street will be lifted by your house, so they're safe again. Uh, that's one of the projects this year. Uh, Baptist Street, uh.
Falls Bridge.
Falls Bridge and Stores Hill all, all have to be something done with them. Um.
And ducking on Falls Bridge Road is actually Snow Bridge Road. It goes off Falls Bridge Road.
That's actually.
Or the pavement stopped by Garrett Earls there, up to the top of the, well, not the top hill, but almost like the way in here.
That's actually not on this list because we had plans to do that already. Um, so we had, we had a downed plan on doing that project first thing this spring.
Definitely needs it.
Yeah.
But that culvert you're, you're talking of is actually on Snow Bridge Road, so it's above the, all the new asphalt and new paving that you're gonna be, instead of taking.
This is the culvert. This is right where the blacktop on Snow Bridge stops and turns to dirt.
Okay.
Just above the horsearm there.
Yeah, we're not touching the paving.
And every year that thing blows up that high.
Yeah.
And it don't go away until the middle of the summer.
Yeah.
And it's all because the water's coming down that hill and it's hitting where the blacktop is a good pieces and it's kind of.
It's all good. I just got a couple of questions on that. Uh, other than the top dressing, I'll, could, could, uh, more like cutting back some of the top dressing on the roads, taking the finances and type from that and adding it to these major projects that need to be done. I, there's no doubt. I, I, I agree. Uh, now, is it gonna be contracted, put up to bid for contractors? Cause this is, this is some pretty serious digging and stuff.
Some that will be solved, but will be done by the road crew.
Yeah.
Yep.
And this finances, money's already in place to cover this?
Yeah.
Or will be shuffled around properly?
Yeah.
You know, since put a bunch of money in surface and roads and knowing that under it, it was just.
No, I agree. I agree with that.
These spots, we've dealt with this every single year.
Yes, sir, back.
Thank you. Uh, same by Cogswell Street. So I heard mentioned that um, there's some culverts that are on the culvert inventory. And when I heard, uh, tell me you talked about the road plan, I know there was just like one culvert that's gonna be replaced. Um, there's two culverts that I heard. I was wondering if you guys are gonna replace both culverts or just one of them?
No, right now the only one that's gonna be replaced is the one that is in line with the one that we replaced on Robar Road.
Okay.
Because the hydrology study up there said that that one had to be upsized to a certain point.
Okay.
The one on Cogswell Street is smaller. You can't have a bigger culvert than a smaller culvert. So they said that one had to be upsized also.
Okay.
Uh, that one will get replaced. The next one uh, actually will just get cleaned out when we do the, like reclaiming the manholes and stuff out of it all.
The reason that I brought up is um, there's the one next to my project. Um, but then the one uh, further down the street eastward, uh, they both overflow and water comes over shooting both of them. So I don't know if you're gonna place both or.
Yeah, well, they're only on a hydrology expert, so. The one, the reason the one down the road has, it has spread out.
Yeah.
The work is spread out, filled in and spread out, so it's. The work is spread out, filled in and spread out, so it's it's plugged the end of the culvert up.
Yeah.
And we'll clean that out and then you all have no issue with that one no more and then they'll upsize the one that's right by your house.
Okay.
Uh that one's gonna get upsized and like I said, all the manholes, the catch bases down through there are all ready.
Great. Yep. Just as far as it works, cause I know it'll be paving, right?
Yeah.
You know, for it to get all repaved and then oh, just miss a culvert and water just going over the green trash over there.
Oh, bye. Thank you.
Anybody else have any question about it?
What's uh what's the plan on keeping those drains cleared out so that gaps should work? Up uh towards Fairwood Farm, that hill, I was calling Stores Hill. There's a lot of drains put in there. The ones that daylighted out to the right side, wasn't running bad water this year.
I don't believe they put a center drain in there. They did some diagonal drains.
Right. What's a day daylighted into the ditch on both sides of it?
Right.
On the right side of the road, didn't run any water this year. It looks like the road maybe was crowded over.
Yeah, that's that's part of the pulling the berms in and ditching up through there is cleaning them drains out that are on that hill. That's why that whole right side got bumped up, but the left side didn't. Yeah. Couple of years ago, when we had such a bad weather, we had five mud seasons, we pushed so much of the road surface into the ditches that it plugged the end of some of their drains. And we're finding them now. You can tell where they are when you know where they were put in and then you see that the water is coming up through the road.
Water up towards the town side.
Yeah.
Same thing.
Then your culvert up almost to Williams that maybe is having an issue. We had a sinkhole there right there where the entrance into the field is before you get to Williams on the left.
Yeah, I just never put any drains from in there.
No, but the culvert I think is causing is having an issue there.
I also have another question. The guide rails west of Castle are down to the road height and the the road surface is right up to the guide rails of water. Water can't pay its way to get out of there, out of the road.
That's that's one of the ones that we're gonna lift up this year. And when we go down that hill through the side ditches and stuff, we're gonna actually take that, rig them guide rails and take that back down. All the bough holes that are there every year.
Yeah, you don't get old bough holes. All you're doing is filling them and making them so they come back again real quick.
They just got back next to the rates.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, that's part of the South Hill, pulling the berms in and the ditches and lifting that guide rails up so they're at proper height. We have new guide rails on Monarch Crossroad.
Right.
We have new guide rails down on on South Hill down where the new culvert is.
Yep.
Um and so that's the only ones left on that side now, they're right there in the hole.
All sounds good unless we have another flood. All goes out.
Shut your mouth, Larry.
July eleventh, be careful. Yes.
Has anyone else complained about Construction Hill? Cause I know that changes.
Your your neighbor, your neighbor told me, showed it to me the other day.
Okay, like because it goes way up and I don't know if this is. I I mean, I wanna go around with somebody and show you these wild roads that have culvert issues. Because I feel like Construction Hill has a huge issue. And what's the next step? Do they fill the culvert for it with bigger chunks of granite? Like stones that kind of keep so the water can go off? I feel like the key, and I don't know all this stuff about granite. I know there's a lot of it around here. I think that's probably the key. It's not porous or it's it's more of an impervious rock. And what's happening is all this water is going through, eroding everything and water goes the path of least resistance. And it eats up everything else, pulls the silt down and the road just constantly collapses.
We're aware, we're aware of it and uh gonna have to take a look at it. And see may end up having to do a pave swale or something because of the steepness of it.
Does that, do you guys run into uh whoever's property is there, the right of way space? Is that what the town decided for? Take that right of way space?
I exactly where the road sits in the right of way, but it's, there shouldn't be room enough to do it.
Okay.
I'm I'm sure that catch base is just plugged. It's probably frozen right now, so.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure. I mean, if I'm the only one that shows up from Construction Hill, then I'll be that one. You know?
There's no sense fixing up everybody's lives up there and have that stuff run down across it, so.
I'm still like, why can't we use concrete? But you guys say it freezes and it's slick, but concrete.
Yeah, but steep, steep graves like that, pave swale seems to work the best. That may be what we'll have to do.
And what's up with granite? So all that granite, pins are everywhere. We can't use any of that to like make like a curve or something to direct the water?
Oh, like granite curving you're talking about? Talked about granite curving?
Yeah.
Yeah, that probably has to be up above the road, like be hard plow and snow and stuff like that. But it does. I mean, it works good in the city where you got small traffic, you know, and everybody knows this here. But if you get sticked out in the middle of that hill, it would get probably ripped out by the snowplow, erect a snowplow one the other. So that's another thing fixing these swales. I don't know if you folded any plows under the trucks this year, but you happened to pass it.
No, we're very lucky this year. This year's been uh winter was, it froze, it stayed froze all winter. We got inches of snow, inches of snow. We went through ten thousand yards to see in this winter. Because of that, because we were out every single day with three dogs a day. It gets snow and it's snowing it's later on. Uh but everything stayed pretty froze most of the winter. Uh mud season I was worried about because the frost was three and a half, four feet deep. And we put the buses on mud routes which kept them off in the roads. So the only thing on the roads were the fuel oil trucks and the trash trucks, which I'd like to stop them too, but I can't. Um and.
You can't do sanitation.
We had enough wind in dry weather. Uh the wind has been our best friend this year for drying and the roads actually are drying up really decent. Except for the problem plus that we have every year where just no water can't get off the road, can't get out of the road except for come straight up.
So I know, I just wanna thank you guys for working on this plan. Like I know it's a lot of work. Um so thank you for doing that. And I know like for Baptist, like like you guys are saying. Skip the top resurfacing stuff and focus on the the berms and the culverts and the the trenching down the center. Cause that'll fix a lot of the major issues. I know Baptist, after you guys took all the berms off last year. I mean, it's been great. I remember seeing a truck all the way buried up to the floorboards a couple of years ago on Baptist. So since you, it's been, it's been good. So um I like that idea of just focus on the culverts and the berms and the center drain. And and then once we get that stuff taken taken care of, then go back and I'm sure having the roller coming too for grading, that's gonna be a big.
Yeah, I think that roller, we're gonna get the roller May first. Uh for the first week of May, we got the second grader coming for the whole pump of May from the eight on. Uh and if we have that roller here for that, I think we'll see a big difference in the roads this summer.
Yeah.
Hold it up after we grade them, providing we don't get the flood of twenty twenty-five.
Okay, uh so does the consensus of the board to shuffle stuff around? You wanna make a motion to that so to have some clear direction?
Not sure how you'd make the motion.
Do what you need and get these.
Yeah.
Get these issues taken care of.
Right, that's a.
Making motion to update the five year highway plan for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven. And twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-eight.
Second?
Uh second.
I should be the second. Are you free of the discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Always.
So your next meeting, we'll have a list of, there's a couple of these that I'm not gonna have, I'm not gonna have time to do a period. But um I'm gonna put some bids together and get some people to bid on the projects like. Pleasant Street is a fairly long stretch. He rerode a fairly long stretch. Um and put put them out to bid. And see if we can get going on them fairly early. So I'll have all that for next month. I'll have bids for next month.
Sounds like a plan. Okay, next thing is all business, which is none around the table.
Just real quick, hey, would you be able to get a a list of, maybe not a list, but map of all the proposed addresses in Williamstown?
Yes, I could do a snapshot that would kind of probably show the.
Yeah, just so they can see the route.
Absolutely. Yeah, the village probably, the village probably was, I I'm not sure. It's mostly gonna be kinda coming down south. Very in a lot of the area like kinda east, venture east hill, a lot of the area around hill, but I'll provide that.
Yes, sir. Let's say this takes a bus to do a journey.
Make the motor do a journey.
Yeah, a little issue.
Okay.
I'm I'm getting to the point where my wife and I are sick and tired of ATVs going by our house flying. At eleven, twelve, one, two o'clock in the morning. They're either going to Brookfield or coming back this way. It's gotta stop.
Where whereabouts do you live?
Light House Hill. And they're not supposed to be on that road, but they're up there all the time. And the other day I heard a four wheeler over behind Steve's uh one day last week. And about an hour later, the two young kids head over through towards Brookfield on an ATV. And it it's gotta stop.
Have you talked to the president of the ATV club?
Yeah.
And he was doing, he told me to call the cops. I called the cops and the cops said by the time they get there, they're gonna be gone. They told me to call the ATV and then they told me to get over cycle. Because they're not supposed to be on that road anyways, but that's one of the roads that wasn't approved for the ATVs.
Um. Are they coming down to the snow machine trail? Is that what they're doing, Karen? Are they coming down to the class four where the snow machine?
Yep, they come down the class four and they go up with the sometimes uh midnight, one o'clock in the morning. They're going up to go towards Brookfield, up to class three road.
Yeah, they go right to class three because they go right by my driveway.
Yeah, they do it all the time. So I would like to see if the Slant Board can do something about it.
Clayton gets up.
Well, yeah, I just um a couple of things. Um no, I I I got a vague idea of where you live. Steve, I know where you live.
I live beyond me about eight hundred, nine hundred feet.
Okay, fair enough. Right now, currently the ATV trails aren't even open. Um.
Oh, that's right. I was just saying, so I, but we uh that 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 road is not even on the ATV trail.
So as far as the president of the ATV club, the local one, he's really has no bearing on that. Cause it's not even, the road is not even open yet. Now, the people that are running up and down your road, that that's just, I I understand that that's terrible. They should be doing it in the first place, but especially at that time. Do you happen to have any trail cams of sort or your neighbors, like like hunting cams?
Oh, I I.
To get like a license plate?
They're not real good ones and they, I don't know if they pick them up or not.
Okay, well, I I'll, I can, I'll ask um Gordon Perry. He is the president. I I think Gordon's still the president, right?
Gordon's the president, yes.
And see if any of them have trail cams just to set up in the area. I'm just trying to come up with an idea to help you all. And you're right, there is no way a cop's gonna get up there when they're when they're running through. If you can get a glimpse of a taillight or or I mean a license plate, at least they can do some follow up, Rodney.
Well, if Slant Board could go to the ATV club.
Yeah.
Hey, if this don't stop.
Right, right. Well, I mean, yes, that could hinder everybody else, the good people that that are, but the trails aren't even open now.
I know. I know.
And that's not even a part of the trail section, so. So I'm just trying to give give, put off all those ideas to help figure out who's doing this. And then turn that information over to the laws so they can do something about it.
Well, I put a trail cam in my driveway pointing out towards the road within about ten, fifteen feet of the road.
Yeah.
And we caught upon the trail cam. I took in the card up to the ATV club and they said, what do you want us to do about it? They said by the time somebody gets here, they're gonna be gone.
Right, right.
So there's gotta be a way to stop them. They they put sign no ATVs on that road on Light House Hill end.
Uh huh.
The last two years, they haven't put one there. But up on the other end towards Brookfield, they don't put one. So they're coming over the hill and then they go, wow, we just came down through. We can go back up through and they come back up through.
Yeah.
And and be different. They were doing it during daylight.
Yeah.
No, no, I I get it. I get it.
Two thirty in the morning.
Uh huh.
Yeah, and at night, you know, so I was here to think somebody's out there because we don't normally have a lot of traffic. They think somebody's out there and they're forty-five minutes wowed up.
Oh, yeah.
Because they're sure somebody's out there.
Yeah, no, I can understand your frustration. I I really do. I'm just trying to throw out some ideas of how we can figure out who this these people are, you know?
Are they utilizing a snowmobile trail? I mean, I know where you live. I just don't, I don't go up that road much. But half of they u- utilizing to go through the woods?
I think they're coming up over from uh the other end of Light House from the Brookfield end. I think they're coming up over there and doing what they want and doing wherever. I I don't think it's just off the snow machine trail. I wrote it off.
That's right.
The snowmobile trail doesn't come down. They're there like here uh behind. Robber.
That.
Robber, yeah, exactly. The other side of the road.
They're using the class four, Light House, Snowmobile, class four road over.
Right, Brookfield.
They're coming over that class four.
Oh, no, I I don't doubt it. I'm just thinking, I know that like the ATV trail actually goes up South Hill. Goes goes up and and cuts across the old farm and right on the end of Carpenter Road and comes back down Carpenter Road. It doesn't go up Light House Hill and it's actually on the town road. That's been part of the trail. Anything else is just trying to get somebody. Now, if they're coming up over behind your house. Um at the other end of Light House Hill, then. I'm, I guess the best suggestion would be, well, hopefully somebody can take a ride down on the other end. See if there's any ATVs that look familiar to what you have on your trail cam. And if there's any way to get a license plate, if there's one on there.
If most of them don't have.
Way, exactly. So that that's it, you know, it's trying to.
David E has.
Trying to get somebody without a license plate.
David E has cameras out there on Light House Hill and I'll talk to him and see if he's got any pictures of.
Right.
At least then we can give it to the Orange County Sheriff and he could be on the lookout for elsewhere, you know?
Now, that's it. I mean.
And other than put, I mean, you can put no no ATV signs up, but it's just like the mud trucks. They go through Light House Hill. You can't stop them unless you can catch them.
Right.
So unless the cop sits up there all night long, you know, on the weekends or whatnot, he's gonna be there.
Cops say that by the time they get there, they'll be long gone, so there's nothing they can actually do about it.
Are they, are are they staying just up on that class four road or they're just kinda going through the woods everywhere?
I think they're running down the class four road onto the class three road. And they're coming down on the South Hill by Grand Road too. Because my one buddy who lives right there on the corner and they're going by his house in the middle of the night and they blow it down inside on the. Intersection of Grand Road and South Hill and it's a couple of kids on four wheelers for a whole car.
So is is there a way at, we kind of guess where they're starting to get on the road and do some kind of block?
I think they're they're coming from Brookfield, so somewhere.
They're always from Brookfield, but lots of times they come up through on the class three and go over towards Brookfield. At midnight, one o'clock in the morning. And I stopped one at one one night and I asked him where he was coming from. This was at twelve thirty at night and he said he'd been over here prior and he was headed off. So I think that's crazy. So like I couldn't hold him because that's not legal. I can't hold them till the cops get here.
I was gonna say maybe, I know Orange County doesn't necessarily do everything at night, but is that something maybe we could talk to them as well? Try to essentially not do a speed trap. But if there's someone being, basically it sounds like they're doing illegal things consistently, talking to the sheriff and saying, hey, can we get someone up there?
I think if Jacky, the Slant Board, mentioned this issue to the Orange County Sheriff, their deputy sheriff. He would pay more attention up that way when he was out about, cause he does go out at night also. Uh what his hours are, whether he patrols or whatnot, but I think it would. It would go a lot further if the Slant Board or Jackie mentioned it to the Orange County Sheriff that these guys call them.
Right.
We have the same. We have the same.
The deputy sheriff came up, uh, last summer. And him and I, I, I've known him for years. And he, he says the same thing. He said, the police department is on a limited time. And he said usually at that time at night, they're not out patrolling. So he, he said, I don't know what to do.
I think we had, had the same problems in the past with Snowmobile Club. It's just a limited number, few people that's causing the ruckus, ruining it for everybody else. Uh, I think a combination of talking to the ATV club and talking to Orange County, just put the word out there that whoever's doing it is gonna get trouble for it. And I just wanna say one thing that, this, you know, the first time I've heard a complaint about the four-wheelers being on the town roads. And I'm not saying that you don't have a problem, but I'm just saying that for the most part, they've been good. I mean, they.
Another guy brought it up last year because they were going by the house. But another issue I have, from the ATV club, when you call them, they say, do you have a four-wheeler? And I tell them no, cause I don't. And they said, well, you're just jealous because they got one and they're out on the roads. So what kind of answer do you tell people that? That's stupid. But something has gotta happen because we spend from the time snow is gone until the time snow comes back. It's constantly, all night long, up and down that road. And you can't get the cops to come up here and sit and wait for them. So there, there's gotta be something that.
If it's going, if it's going on constantly, seems like we could get somebody up there to slow things down a little bit.
Probably have to sit there twenty-four seven, or catch up with them. Unfortunately.
It's happening at night, right? Most of the time.
Is it like Friday, Saturday, on average nights?
Seven days a week they go up and down through there.
At least three nights this week during the week.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna suggest is the trail cams could provide data about when they're most likely to go through. And that would help sell this to Orange County Sheriff's rather than, hey, can you just stay there all night? The data we have from the trail camp shows that they tend to go through between ten and twelve on Fridays. Can you please, you know, do a speed trap at that specific time?
The other thing is some of that stuff a few years ago, they used the ATVs to verify for reconnaissance and we had break-ins up there. And they got messing with places. And, and that's good reconnaissance. They're now right looking.
Like I know David Heath has cameras out there, um.
I can get them tomorrow, but I don't, I don't see hardly ever. It's not around.
We'll talk to the, uh, Orange County about it and see what we can do.
We don't have the same schedule.
Could have to catch the ones that's probably most likely the same bunch as us most of the time, but. I mean, you know, we get a, we had a group, still have them in town, the Snowmobile Clubs. For example, going across that wooden, it's not a wooden bridge, but it's got the wooden rails on it where they all the houses, project, there's clearly signs of no snow machines on it. They keep running back and forth on it. I know all the air, the cops have arrested them a couple of times and they're just numbing the head. They just don't seem to get.
That's one way to get them.
Yeah.
Little black car decided to go across that bridge.
So, so anyway, I, I, I understand what you're coming from, you know, which I don't.
Another idea is if they're coming from the bar, I assume the pub.
They didn't say what, if they're coming from the den or the pub or where. They just said they've been at the bar and went down and they're heading back to Brookfield.
Maybe, you know, if there's four, have a sheriff stop by and if there's four-wheelers outside the bar, uh, you know, just have the sheriff go by where your place is.
We've been to four hundred.
All swirly wherever, maybe if you stop there, they're, they're.
The only other question I had is do class four roads, if it's, keeps being an issue, can there be gates put across them? Or is that it?
No.
Cause I've seen it in Barret Town and Plainfield, cause I hunt.
Yeah, there are probably headroads though that are gated, that are gated.
I, I don't, again, I've seen it, especially Plainfield, it might be Marshfield wherever I hunt. And it might be illegal, I just know they. Residents get sick and tired of people driving down the road being very obnoxious. And I think they just started putting up gates. So I just didn't know if that was legal often too, but I do agree if.
Residents can't put a gate up, but a town could put concrete blocks or something. They've done that before, a class four road, just stop it through and tore it up.
Well, that's, I mean, that might be a solution too, is basically making it difficult to, whatever's the legal route of essentially roadblock. I mean, yeah, the very efficient game club during the winter, they block that off. You can't go through the entire road because of winter, they don't cloud anymore, so.
The problem with these guys is they're right at the end of the class three road and turn into the class four.
Yeah.
So the class four section down beyond them and they're coming right by your place along the class three second of the road now.
You can't really gate it off because it's an awful lot of people, their own property out there.
The only way you access to what. The only way you could do it is if all the property owners got together and decided to put a gate up and have a key. To everybody and.
I don't think you can legally.
Yeah.
It's a town.
It's still a town road.
What's it we could do with Orange County first?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I also.
We'll see what we can do, whether it works or not, I don't know, but we'll try something and see how it works.
And I think maybe discussing with the, I mean, are, guessing you're part of the ATV club?
No, no, I, I don't even have it by side by side anymore, but I will by my own, I just, I just enjoy doing it.
Especially, you know, trusting of how they reacted to you, that's not professional. They get a lot of support from the town. I mean, I think we just voted on reenacting where their trails are allowed to be.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so that, that crazy with that, so, you know, treating people with dignity and respect is a big mantra of mine. So if they're the organization, they wanna keep having their, I mean, I can tell you right now, the Creamy Stand I think is opening up soon, but I see, I see ATVs at that Creamy Stand more than I see vehicles because they're allowed to come down. And, you know, I don't own an ATV either. I wish their bikes would be allowed. Uh, but no, I think that, you know, they need to be respectful and, you know, helping. They're because someone's being, hurting them. You know, these people probably are not following the law appropriately and it's gonna hurt them overall, so.
Yeah, cause we hadn't had any issues that I didn't wear of in the village area with them horsing around.
Yeah.
You know, it's been good, but all it takes is a few idiots that screwed up everybody, yeah.
That's, that's the hardest thing.
Dealing with, dealt with it with the Snow Machine Club for years, it's just one, get rid of one bunch, the next group crops up. It's a, it's a ongoing thing, it's unfortunate, but it is what it is. So, I guess that, most do Jerry now?
Uh.
Jerry McQuinn?
I, everybody.
Guess we're good. You got one?
Another idea is to reach out to the Brookfield Select Board and just see if they have any complaints or maybe, uh, work the team line.
Do you have any trails in Brookfield?
I, I don't, I, I don't.
Yeah, that, that's a good idea too, is.
Not that I know of, they all, they all go east, but I don't think it's anything any further than that. Closest one would be, um, Northfield and I don't think you go down that as far as Brookfield.
Yeah.
Now, I appreciate you bringing it up and I, I think it's gonna take some patience, but coming up with ideas, talking to Brookfield, working together, maybe signage on their side and the cameras around, getting more data in Orange County. And so it might take some time, but I, I think after a little bit of racking up brains, eventually we'll be able to hopefully figure something out.
Word of mouth goes a long ways. Everybody that has four-wheelers or, or has kids that has four-wheelers in that area, they know who they are.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, so Jack, you'll reach out to Brookfield and Orange County and Dave said you'll reach out about the cams and so we'll try and get something.
I'm a member of a four-wheeler club, I don't have a four-wheeler now, I just call it the club because I love them. And the support of them, I'll speak to Gordy and my nephew Michael is the road, is the trail foreman. And even though that's not a trail, it still is looking bad for the four-wheeler club.
It does, yeah.
I think they'd be more than, I, I think they should do more to try to help.
Even just getting it out there, like, hey.
Yeah, maybe cause there's no ATV signs up. If they were there before, they'd offer and help, not that the sign's gonna do anything there. But, you know, at least it's them making an effort.
That only keeps honest people honest.
Yes, sir. Just like a locked door.
We'll do our due diligence to rectify the situation. If not, if you don't say anything, it's not, do the lack of trying.
Okay.
Make a motion to, uh.
What's your hand? I'll second.
Second.
I second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks everyone for coming.